For Monday, August 25th, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Uh, that would take us to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for the previous minutes? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held August 11th, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Does it look like this minutes reflect what happened? I don't see any council members ringing in, so I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. That would bring us to the adoption of the agenda. We have the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Logan?
I'll move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation for the agenda as presented? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Uh, and this brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward on any community-related matter or any matter they'd wish to address council on. Um, we did have one group let us know ahead of time that they wanted to be here, and so we'll maybe start with them. Uh, we had representatives from the CNFA and Ms. Dominique Allen. Dominique, do you want to come forward? Come on down, have a seat. Be welcome. Introduce yourselves, uh, for council and, uh, for our recording secretary, and, uh, you have about five or so minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Given and members of council. My name is Dominique Allen, and I'm the executive director of the Canadian National Fireworks Association. I'm here today along with our consultant, Dan Bordenali, from Southernland and Associates, to speak to you on behalf of the members of the CNFA, uh, representing manufacturers, distributors, retailers, and enthusiasts of fireworks throughout Canada. The CNFA's mission is to promote safety and fair access in the sale and use of legal fireworks through public education, advocacy with regulators, and member compliance. The focus of my presentation today is regarding item 942, Fire Services Bylaw C-1275, and the staff recommendation to ban family fireworks in the city of Grand Prairie. The CNFA is requesting that the city of Grand Prairie Council refuse the recommendation to ban family fireworks, continue to permit the use of family fireworks, and provide the CNFA with an opportunity to work with the city of Grand Prairie Fire Department to implement measures to increase public awareness and education regarding the safe sale and use of fireworks. According to the report before you, the purpose of banning fireworks in Grand Prairie was due in part to the suggestion that the government of Alberta is expected to ban fireworks provincially. However, the proposed legislation for municipal affairs has yet to be adopted. Uh, it would allow municipalities in Alberta who have a permissive municipal bylaw to continue to permit the sale and use of family fireworks. This includes the neighboring county of Grand Prairie, which currently has a permissive fireworks bylaw number 2924. However, it is unclear what, if any, changes will be adopted by the Minister of Municipal Affairs with respect to fireworks. In fact, the CNFA has recently been invited to make a presentation to the Alberta Fire Technical Council in September. This is in order to provide industry insight and advice on the Alberta fire code in advance of it being adopted by the province. As you may know, on June 19th, the city of Grand Prairie held a public open house to inform the public on the proposed bylaw, including the proposal to ban fireworks. However, unfortunately, no one attended. As a result, the CNFA conducted a poll in Grand Prairie to determine the public's position with respect to fireworks in their community. The phone poll that was conducted in July clearly indicates that the majority of Grand Prairie residents are opposed to the proposed ban on fireworks and believe that legal fireworks are generally safe products. I also have a petition here with me that I will submit to you with over 250 signatures of local residents to stop the proposed ban and to support the continued use of family fireworks. In fact, the number of signatures have doubled in the last week since last week's committee's decision. Fireworks is not a significant issue that requires the need to ban the product. They do not pose significant risk to public safety and property. In fact, statistics show that the public is 100 times more likely to be injured or incur property damage as a result of candles compared to fireworks. Legal family fireworks in Canada are rigorously tested at the federal level and have safety instructions on the packaging of each firework. According to annual Alberta Fire Commissioner's statistical reports, fireworks do not even register as a category for personal injury or property damage, unlike other identified categories such as candles, clothing dryers, refrigerators, and vacuum cleaners. In fact, there is only one reference to fireworks in the entire report under the term miscellaneous. The challenge with banning illegal products such as fireworks is the difficulty in educating the public on the safe use of the product and the difference between legal and contrabanned fireworks. The CNFA works with several municipalities and retailers to promote safety. However, if the product is banned in Grand Prairie, we will not be able to obtain this By allowing the residents of Grand Prairie to continue to use family fireworks, a legal product that is already federally regulated, with fair and reasonable regulation, the city of Grand Prairie and the CNFA can work together to promote fireworks education and safety, thereby reducing the misuse of fireworks. In conclusion, the CNFA's objective is the same as the city of Grand Prairie, to promote safety when it comes to fireworks sales and use. Let us work with you to achieve this objective together through appropriate regulation, not a ban. On behalf of the CNFA, I'd like to thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak with you today, and Dan and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thanks very much for the presentation. We have at least one person in the queue with some questions. Counselor Rice?
I, it was very difficult for me. I began, when we began the process, I totally supported your position. I don't like to see us banning legal products that are federally, uh, regulated, and I, I thought it was perhaps overkill, if you will. However, and I was very excited when I heard you were doing a survey. However, I looked at that survey, and instead of having that information that could shore up my position, as I mentioned at the committee meeting to you, I found it insulting. And I guess I was hoping you would come here tonight and say, you know what, why don't you table that for a month and we'll do a proper survey? I believe there are three questions on the survey. The questions were, I'll, I'll call them inflammatory. Uh, the city of Grand Prairie is considering banning the sale and use of family fireworks for the celebration of significant events, including, uh, Canada Day. Uh, there's, there's no mention of banning the Canada Day fireworks or any fireworks put on and administered by a registered pyrotechnician, yet this question would infer that that's going to happen. Have you ever enjoyed fireworks with your family and friends in your community on Canada Day? Well, gee, imagine that. Only 7% said, you know, I don't know. Well, of course, yeah, I mean, everybody loves fireworks. Um, do you believe that legal fireworks are safe products? That's okay, that's okay. But why? I, I guess I just don't understand why you wouldn't have asked, have you or your family ever used or enjoyed fireworks in a backyard setting, uh, by a responsible adult? That to me would give me some relevant information on which to say, yes, I was right in the first place. Uh, what, what this survey that you did is, you know, uh, like I say, it's misleading. Uh, and, and I, so it's irrelevant. It's, it's not worth the paper. It's, it's written on, and, and I, I'd like to, I would like to believe I came in here believing that your organization was far more professional than this survey would lead me to believe. And so, as I say, it's, it's kind of tough for me because I don't like to see the banning of any legal product. Um, but because you haven't given me the tools with which to support that, then I find my support is, is definitely soft.
Allen or part of the presentation, sure?
Dan Bordenali. Um, uh, thank you for the comments, Counselor Rice. Um, as the, the CNFA's consultant, we, we went about to commission, uh, the poll, and the poll questions were developed through, through, uh, our, our company as well as the polling firm momentum. And the, the poll was, uh, was not intended to, um, mislead. Poll was not intended to, um, create, um, a division. Uh, it was, it was there to determine the public's perception of fireworks, and, um, looking back at the questions and, uh, and reviewing them again, um, there were, one of the questions where, where we identified family fireworks as, as the firework that we were, we were discussing. Um, I understand your concerns, and we can certainly, uh, go back and work with whoever, um, on council to develop, uh, questions that, um, clearly are, are, are clear about family fireworks. Um, the reference to Canada Day was based on the fact that the majority of people that use fireworks, uh, use it really on a couple of days of the year. Canada Day, Victoria Day, sometimes a special occasion, uh, whether it be an anniversary or, or things of that nature. But the vast majority of fireworks, family fireworks, are used on Canada Day. In fact, in Vancouver, um, Halloween is the biggest day for fireworks use, so it depends on the municipality. But, um, we can certainly go back and redo that, that, uh, that survey with questions that are developed in tandem with, um, with council, um, if, uh, if that would be suitable. And then we can certainly provide those results and, and go from there. So we have no problem doing that. And, and again, it, there, it was no intention to, uh, mislead or, or, um, or frame the, the questions in a misleading way.
Thanks. Appreciate the, the response. I see Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks, Dan, Dominique, for coming to our beautiful city and, uh, uh, and the delegation. I, on the other hand, on the other side, Counselor Rice, you went to an open house, and there was nobody there, at city staff, and you took the initiative and said, how do you feel in our community? Uh, you can reword the questions. I don't think you'll always have everybody saying, yes, we like how you worded that. Uh, you know, can you reword that? Can you reword that? But at least you took the initiative. There was no one at the open house, but staff. So it didn't show total awareness to me. I just had a question of the last hundred years, um, there was statistics I heard, and I can't bring it up now, of how many people might have been hurt in all of Canada from the fireworks. It was something like that. Do you have that on you?
It's hard to present statistics for Canada as a whole because you do have provinces like Saskatchewan, um, that, uh, you know, when I was in contact with the Office of the Fire Commissioner, then they told me, we just don't keep statistics on fireworks because there are so few. It's not worth the data. Um, so it's hard to get national statistics when you do have some provinces that just don't keep them. I can speak specific to Alberta, um, where information we got from the Office of the Fire Commissioner did, um, tell us that there have only been four reported injuries caused by legal family fireworks in the entire province of Alberta since 1997.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Uh, any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and good evening. Thanks for coming again. Well, one half of you come again, and one, one the first time. Um, so I was confused, actually, and I'm still somewhat confused in terms of the survey. Um, forgetting about some of the wording, et cetera. When we received the first survey via email, um, there were a certain number of questions. When it was passed out at committee, it, there was an additional question on it, and tonight I see back to the first. So explain that to me because, uh, first of all, and I'd like a follow-up, if I might, Mayor Given.
Sure. The, um, so the, the poll that, that was distributed to, to the mayor and council through email was the official poll. Um, the poll that was distributed, uh, at committee was, was inadvertently the, the raw data poll. And that raw data poll included, uh, uh, one question that was removed from the official poll. And that question was related to, um, uh, private property.
Right.
The reason why it was removed, uh, and it was, uh, determined to be removed by the polling company, uh, was because the premise of the question was, was actually false. Um, the question was, uh, currently the city of Grand Prairie does not allow fireworks on private property. Uh, do you believe fireworks should be on private property? So the premise of the question was false. Uh, we, we found out at a later date that, that technically the city of Grand Prairie does allow fireworks on private property. Um, uh, but, uh, so it was determined by the polling firm that the, the misleading, uh, uh, statement before the question, uh, made the plus minus, uh, way out of whack, and, and we didn't want to present, um, a, a question that was misleading. Um, from Counselor Rice's perspective, the whole poll was misleading, but, uh, but we, we, again, we, we endeavored to, um, provide a poll to council that, uh, we believed was, was valid and was not misleading, and, uh, that fifth question was removed as a result.
I see that covers it. Thank you very much.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. As you know, this item will be dealt with a little bit later on in our agenda. You're of course welcome to stay around. I don't know if you have any final comments that you'd like to make, uh, before we open up the seat for some minutes.
Oh, I'd just like to say thank you for welcoming me back, welcoming me back to the beautiful city of Grand Prairie, and thank you for having me.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your presentation today. So as I said, this is a regular part of our council meetings where we have, uh, an open opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any matter, uh, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing, which we have a couple of those that are coming up later on. Uh, so there are some other people in the gallery. Is there anybody else here that would like to come and address council or want to come forward to share anything with council? I see some folks encouraging other people, uh, but if there's, uh, by all means, feel welcome. We're not, we're not as scary as it might seem, uh, but if you'd like to come up and share, uh, you're more than welcome. Uh, and I'll ask one last time, uh, because if nobody's going to come forward, then we're going to move on. So this is the, uh, regular opportunity that we have at every council meeting. So if you missed your chance this week, uh, there certainly is an opportunity, uh, two weeks' time when council has its next council meeting. So I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda then, um, and we'll move on. Uh, we had actually no public hearings and no unfinished business, and it takes us right into, uh, reports. And item 8.1 is a land use bylaw amendment. Uh, Ms. Ferguson, are you going to handle that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, administration is recommending that first reading be given to bylaw C-1260-17 to amend the land use bylaw, and that Monday, September 22nd, at 6:30 PM in council chambers, be established as a date, time, and location for the public hearing. The amendment, um, is a rezoning of a portion of the west gate east area from RC to RG, and another portion of that same area from RG to RC. And the RC, uh, district is low-income, medium-density residential, which is multifamily development up to 12 units. RG is general residential, which includes single and semi-detached housing.
Uh, and just for clarity, I think it's, uh, lower med, RC is lower medium-density residential. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're looking for a motion to set date, time, and location? Counselor Rice?
I just have a question first. We're not counseling the September 22nd meeting, uh, in case some people are at the pre-con?
The AUMA pre-convention? No, certainly hasn't been scheduled this time, and if any council members go, we'd only be looking for a form of council.
Okay. I would move first reading of bylaw C-1260-17, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation? It's a date, time, and location? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move that Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 6:30 PM at city council chambers be established as a date, time, and location of the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. While we're at this, the discussion as to date, time, and location, since that's what we're voting on this time around, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we have another land use bylaw amendment, Ms. Ferguson, uh, 8.2, land use bylaw amendment C-1260-18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration is recommending first reading be given to bylaw C-1260-18 to amend the land use bylaw, and that Monday, September 22nd, at 6:30 PM in council chambers be established as a date, time, and location for this public hearing as well. And this bylaw proposes an amendment to change the zoning of, um, a portion of the, uh, Lot 1, Plan 992, 2945, from urban reserve district to public service district, and this area is just north of the Mother Teresa School. And the purpose of the change in designation is to allow for construction of modulators in this area.
Okay. Thanks very much. Ms. Ferguson, can I have a motion for first reading? Counselor McLean?
I move that first reading be given to bylaw C-1260-18 to rezone from UR to PS being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Uh, motion for first reading, there is no discussion or debate. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers be established as the date, time, location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion as to date, time, and location proposed for that public hearing? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that would take us on into our committee business. Uh, we'd start with 9.1, the minutes from the special community safety committee meeting. Counselor McLean, I think that was yours?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the special community safety committee meeting held August 11th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like they're in order? Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to remind those who are watching and viewing, uh, yeah, actually, we dealt with the action coming from those minutes of last meeting.
Okay. Thanks very much. Uh, seeing nobody else in the queue, I'll call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, we've moved to 9.2, the Community Growth Committee meeting from August 12th. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move the council receive the minutes for the Community Growth Committee meeting held August 12th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like everything's in order?
Yes.
Counselor O'Toole, do you want to share a synopsis of what happened at that meeting?
Uh, yeah, so on that day, we had a discretionary use, uh, on a piece of land, and, uh, we had a customer contact center be proposed for the city. Uh, so many of the areas that, uh, deal with customers, uh, our ratepayers, uh, could have a one-call center, and, uh, we could distribute the, the phone calls with a number of staff. They would all be educated daily on what's going on in the city, the results of, uh, number of things, and so that's being proposed. Uh, also, we had the citizen satisfaction survey, a follow-up, and that will be coming out to the public here right away. And, uh, we had another discretionary use. Uh, it was a restaurant across from the East Link Center. Uh, we accepted that one. Let's, uh, go through.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Toole? Again, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and would take us to 9.3, the Community Living Committee from August 12th. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held August 12th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radver, you had some business arising.
Couple of the motions. Thank you, Mayor Given. Firstly, I would move council approve the request of $40,000 in emergency funding for the Nighthawk Recreation Area to come out of the budget surplus from the Recreation Sports Department. Uh, in speaking of this motion, um, uh, Nighthawk Recreation Area has, had asked, uh, MD of Greenview, the County of Grand Prairie, the City of Grand Prairie for support, um, to, I guess, break, get things to break even this past, uh, year. Um, MD of Green Wheel, Greenview is, uh, supporting with $80,000, and the County of Grand Prairie, $40,000, and this motion is coming to us tonight. Emergency funding, uh, for, was for, really, uh, they had a tough year weather-wise and equipment-wise. They had significant expenditures and costing with respect to bringing, with some equipment issues they had. In discussions with the, uh, with the representatives at committee, um, they are, um, they have developed a longer-term plan, uh, and has, uh, and that longer-term plan has led to a possibility of us looking at, uh, some requests over the next few years until they get, I guess, on their feet again, so to speak. Um, and that will, we will see that, uh, prior to, uh, the budget or during budget times. Um, the committee was interested in a long-term look at, uh, with their operational costs, et cetera, where, and capital costs over the long term. But this really was a request to deal with a particularly, uh, difficult, challenging year for them, and, uh, committee, uh, chose to support the motion and bring it here to council. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radver. Counselor Rice?
It's my understanding, uh, Counselor Radver, that they continue to fundraise, that they're not just looking at the municipalities to bail them out, that they indeed have a fundraiser happening September 18th. Is that correct?
Counselor Radver, you're going to have to turn your mic off. And, sorry, mic on.
I'm not sure of the specifics, uh, Counselor Rice, but yes, they understand that part of, part of their revenue pool needs to be initiatives that they take and not just ask for, uh, I guess, the municipalities and other organizations for support. So I think they, uh, they own and they're, they're, uh, believe that they're certainly the most important partner in long-term solutions. Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question. I know last council, they had plans for long-term planning, and we as a city, we've sold out over $100,000, and now we have, we're going to have long-term planning again. So I'm just looking forward to when they're actually going to come and really table and show their long-term planning, because it seems like every couple of years, they, they need lots of money, and to say they're not, they do fundraisers every year, but I think every year they possibly look looking as if they're going to need municipal funding. So I really like to see that long-term planning.
Counsel Radburn?
Yeah, I just understand that, but I do think it was, it was a difficult, difficult year operationally for them. And we haven't had requests for a number of years until recently.
Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just as a follow-up to that, I sit on the Nighthawk Committee. It's the city council representative and a few into more specifics of some of the issues that they had this year. Although there was a lot of snow, they had, we had a lot of cold weather that went along with that. There was many days that the ski hill was unable to open due to cold weather. They did have some unusual circumstances with some equipment. Going forward, they do, they are currently prepared to be bringing something, as Counselor Radburn mentioned, to budget for continual operation, operational funds going forward into our next budget. And as well, they are currently working on purchasing some equipment that will get them open sooner in the season, which hopefully will get them many more days of skiing. And, and in regards to Counselor Rice's comment, they do have a fundraiser coming up and it's on October fourth. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Any further discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that, I guess, a two-part motion. First of all, I would move that council approve funding from the facility renewal reserve for installation of a washroom in the Kids Place preschool at the Dave Bar Community Center in the amount of seventy-one thousand and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. May I give an overview of both motions now? This is a, this is a cost to develop a second child-sized washroom at the daycare. And it is a requirement for licensing, licensing. So this wasn't a want, this was a need in terms of licensing for that facility. The other thing that was asked a committee that I think is relevant is that this second washroom will be useful and it's situated where it will not be impacted by further expansion of the Dave Bar arena for any, for any particular reason. And the reason that we're, as you'll see in the second motion, they succeeded budget. It took a couple of years for this to happen and they had to find the right location. So really, this first motion is about putting in place the necessary funds toward the tender in the second motion. Thank you.
Counsel Radburn? Counselor Rice?
I just want some clarification on that. So you're saying they've been saving money toward it and now this is the valid, this, the amount in, in this first motion plus what they've saved will add up to in the second?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate? Does anybody ring in? So I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn, part two?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Second is I move that council award tender T forty-nine dash four three six dash fourteen, daycare washroom installation, Dave Bar Community Center, to T West Construction as the lowest tender meeting city specifications in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-three cents excluding, excluding GST.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that one? Seeing none? I'll call for the vote. Motion carries. Counsel Radburn, was there anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Just one other item to, to, to share with council that I guess, why did, that was on the agenda and we provided some direction to. Wapiti Planning Society had requested via letter that three hundred thousand dollars be referred to our budget, being processed this fall, to extend the trail from South Bear Creek to Aqua Terra Landfill off of Range Road sixty-one. This is a chunk, some of us from time to time kind of mentioned chunks that, connector chunks that are missing. This is one that would help take the trail system out to the city, out to where it could be connected to county trails. So anyway, it was just a referral to budget. No decision until budget time.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. The next point, we're going back again. Counsel McLean, I think you had community safety from August nineteenth.
Thank you, Mayor. I move council receive the minutes of community safety committee held August nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are they presented accurately? Does it look like that captures the meeting? They must because somebody's ringing in. So I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Those minutes are adopted. Counsel McLean, I think you have a few items coming up.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we do. I move that council approve the donation lost or unclaimed bicycles to the Swan City Rotary Club and direct administration to ensure the public is aware of the timelines to recover the bikes.
Counsel McLean, any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Counsel Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question if any of the bikes that the city currently has, was there a discussion about whether there could be use locally for, for the bikes to maybe lower-income children?
Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. They do have an option of time every time they put them out to do it, but I could send this over to administration if they want to ask for this. But there's some people here may be able to speak to it, but they do have a timeframe for the public to come and look at the bikes, but exact timeframe, maybe Chris.
Well, administration's getting set, can say that that wasn't something that was discussed specifically at the committee, Counsel Terrence, but I don't know if administration has done any efforts towards that in the past. Mr. Menel, by law enforcement, enforcement services manager?
Certainly so to ask Counselor, or answer Counselor Terrence's question. They're actually, the Rotary Club's not requesting any children's bikes. It's actually just requesting adult bicycles. So they will be separated from the children's bikes. At this point, what we usually do is go to public auction with the bicycles. I believe in the past, we have done some partnerships with some different societies, organizations in regards to low income. I can say presently, we don't have any of those initiatives ongoing. But there is opportunity for them to come forward.
Sounds like that answer to that.
Yeah.
Perfect. So certainly if there's a desire to follow up on that, with the children's bikes specifically, that's certainly possible by the time of it. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, you've got...
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is going to be on nine point four point two. Shouldn't I just go to be able to have first reading? Okay. I move council give first reading to the fire service bylaw C dash twelve seven five as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote on first reading. We'll have discussion or debate on a subsequent reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council have, gives second reading to the fire services bylaw C dash twelve seventy-five as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. So second reading is open for discussion or debate. Anybody care to ring in with discussion or debate on second reading of this fire services bylaw? Don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote.
I'll move on to slope repair. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council award tender T dash forty-seven dash five five two dash fourteen, Bear Creek Slope Repair to Wapiti gravel suppliers as the lowest tender meeting city specifications in the amount of five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eighty dollars and seven cents excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Open for discussion or debate on this tender award? Seeing one, Counsel Rice?
This is part of an ongoing, like it, it forms part of a whole picture, does it not? The slope, it, it, it's part of a big project.
There's, there's two areas, I believe, Mayor Given, and maybe the director or Asho can speak to both of the issues. There's two of them.
Community safety director? Mr. Glanty?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That's correct, Counsel Rice. These two locations now are being repaired near one oh six street and one hundred and twelve avenue and one oh second street and ninety-fourth avenue. However, there is a largest repair program where every year, engineering department has selected different locations where we see erosion or slope, slopes not stable. So you will see more locations coming in the next capital plan.
And it, it's to make the, the, of the creek bank safer, right?
That's correct.
Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question for administration. I believe there was provincial funding for the slope rehabilitation in the past. Is this current funding our own municipal dollars or is this provincial funding?
Mr. Glanty?
Thank you, Mr. Given, Mayor Given. This particular project has multiple funding sources. There's a component coming from the federal gas tax, AMIP capital tax, and, but mostly from the disaster relief grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate, questions or comments on this tender award? Seeing nobody else ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counsel McLean, I think you had, oh, sorry, that was all of your business. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight from the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring up about the slope repair. This seems to be coming every second year that we're having issues and that we have to work on. So I don't think it's going to be a surprise that this is a current event with the environment and we'd be looking at slope repair down the road. Just want to throw that up from the meeting.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. So we moved to nine point five, corporate services committee meeting, and Counsel Logan, I believe that was the meeting that you helmed for us. Counsel Logan?
Thank you. Like to move the minutes of the corporate services committee of August nineteenth to be received by council.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If you could add Counsel Radburn as an observer in that agenda, please, in those minutes. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. We'll make sure that that's noted. Any other discussion or debate on the minutes that change? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more vote, Counsel. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that handles all of our committee business. Counsel Logan, sorry if you'd like to highlight anything that was on.
There's a couple of things that council would probably find of interest. One was a series of three motions with relation to the two thousand and thirteen tax recovery with being offered for sale by public auction. And Counsel, Counselor O'Toole did the work of putting the three motions in place, which include setting the date for the auction and reserve bids as well. We, by the kindness of Counsel Terrence, we had the, sorry, the unaudited financial statements and schedules for the six-month period to June thirtieth. And I think those are the two significant items.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I may just want to highlight one other item from the meeting was a letter of correspondence we got from the Minister of Municipal Affairs in regards to some new funding that will be given to municipalities over this coming, I guess, next budget cycle. And one of the surprises in there was that there's a new metropolitan funding for cities above fifty-five thousand, which Grand Prairie, City Grand Prairie happens to be above. So I believe in the, in the first year, we have about three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in new additional provincial grant money that will be coming to us, which is, it's a, it's a great start in addressing some of the inequalities that exist between urban and rural municipalities. And I look forward to the continuation of this program and, and its expansion.
Thanks, Counsel Terrence. We'll move on then from committee business. So we had no items of correspondence. Our one piece of delegation business, I believe, was, was handled. We had no notices of motion and for council member reports, I believe there's only one today unless we have any others. I'm looking to Counsel Terrence for a Wapiti Corridor planning group.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Earlier, last, or sorry, earlier last week, we had a meeting. There was a number of concerns that came forward to the, to the board. There was some misinformation being spread around about regarding the plan. And a number of residents from the Grovedale area were concerned with what the plan would mean for them. And so there was a public meeting, sorry, there was a couple of, a series of public meetings held prior to the board's knowledge. And so we thought it would be prudent to, to have a media, a public meeting ourselves so that we could provide the correct information and also hear some of the concerns with the plans since we had that last Monday night. So it, it was a really good meeting in that we were able to address a lot of the misinformation out there. There was many lies and misrepresentations of the plan. So we were able to provide correct information. But we were also to learn, also able to learn a few things about, about the plan, maybe some deficiencies that we could correct. And I think there was also some, some correspondence, some communication that could be, could have been a little bit better with, with the plan. So going forward, we are presenting the plan at the M D of Greenview's council meeting this week. And we will be looking to address some of their concerns there. And, you know, going forward, you know, we're, we're hoping that, you know, they will adopt, formally adopt the plan. But if that does not take place, the board is preparing, is looking at a number of options to, to go forward with the plan at that point.
Thanks very much, Counsel Terrence for that update. And we'll start council member reports with Counsel Thieson, who has a Mighty Piece Watershed Alliance report.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Yes, today, this morning, I attended a Mighty Piece Watershed Conference here. And I guess it wasn't really a conference, it's more of a discussion about the state of the watershed report that we had just released back in April. Now we're developing the terms of reference. So working out the plan based on what we see as the watershed having problems and challenges and how we're going to apply those. So if you're not familiar with the terms of reference, basically, it's defining the scope of the work, outlining the process and the development of the plan, including certain timelines, milestones, and budgets. So that was predominantly what we, we talked about today. I know that the group has, has a plan to have it come forward within a month, once we have the terms of reference all set out. And we're just going to keep those terms of reference as a draft for the local communities. And I think it's going to be coming through Grand Prairie on November the fifth, down at the Musquee Pavilion. So that is my update for the Mighty Piece Watershed Alliance.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. And why don't we start council member roundtable report?
Sure. You know, I didn't really do much in the last two weeks. I had, I had a lot of time off. I could talk about what I did in the last six weeks, but council was shut down. But I'll tell you what, I, I do want to talk about the Centennial. I mean, I wasn't here on the eleventh and, you know, I put a lot of hard work and effort into it and I really have to thank Helen Rice for putting the trust in me to be co-chair or co-chief with Janet Longmait for that event. It was an excellent event and there are some people that I noticed weren't thanked and they were missing the roundtable last time. And I know without these people's support, we probably couldn't have pulled off as effective or as smooth a running event as we did. And to that, I'd like to thank some of our administration personalities who are involved on the board. Michelle Gardner, who is our logistics coordinator for the event, as well as Carla Wells and Mayor McIntyre, who worked out parks logistics, site planning, and, and pretty much helping the whole event run from start to finish. They were volunteers that never stopped running. Speaking of volunteers within the city too, Carol Rayburn and Nikki Thompson all deserve huge props for making that event so successful. And one final, one final note, over the time, I put, I think, probably about two hundred hours personally into this event without exaggerating. And it was a great event. But I know each and every one of these individuals put in about as much, if not more, time into this project when I came on. But I just want to throw a shout-out to my friend John Paul Cheeseman, who helped me do security throughout the course of the weekend. I, I don't know if anyone was aware, but on Thursday night, the Ernie Radburn Pavilion was vandalized by some youth. was vandalized by some youth. The windows were smashed and we took that opportunity to help out, picking up garbage and talking with the youth that were down there in Musqueseepee Park and making sure the place is safe and sound and that nothing like that happened for the rest of the weekend. So to my friend John Paul, who was willing to do that with me, thank you very much. That's all I got to say.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. This has been a very busy period of time, but I would like to mention three things that I either enjoyed or found challenging. The first was a tremendous enjoyment of the musical ride and got to see our mayor stand up at attention and receive the salute. And it was just, in spite of the problem with footing for some of the horses during the display, it was just a wonderful display that was put on. Second thing was tourism strategy workshop that we held on Thursday, the twenty-first. And normally, these things don't get mentioned at the council meeting because they come forward as action items a bit later, but this was just a tremendously interesting and I think productive session that we had for those that attended and I enjoyed it very much. I think we had some tremendous ideas. My third item is a development appeal board that I chaired last Friday that I think myself and the other board members found to be a very interesting discussion. And the minutes will be coming out on that DAB as, as time goes on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Before I start, I just want to say that lots of people talked about our celebration centennial and how the job you did, Chris and Helen. And I think that how packed it was in front of down there in that area, I call it the bowl, but I think that deserves a round of applause. We had like fifteen thousand people and I want to say thank you very much. I, so I'll go on, I, I seen the YouTube or the pictures of it. I've never seen so many people down in that area. So maybe I could be corrected by counselors that have been in the city longer than me. I'll go to August thirteenth, we had an in-camera, basically some trends and stuff within policing. August thirteenth, I did go to an event and Neighborhood Association was for mission and, but I had to leave early. My one child had a bleeding nose and we had to leave early. So I was very glad about the turnout there. And this is where, this is previous council and this council's direction, Neighborhood Association are growing. They're not decreasing, they are growing. They're not like Where the Block Parent and It's Gone, even though they're trying to revive that now. The Neighborhood Association is doing very well. August fourteenth, I got to get behind the camera for a video interview within the city. So I hope that all went well. I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know if it's out there or not. I'm just naming a couple more. Some of these we did were really important to our community coming up, meetings we had last week. It was very full. August twentieth, a special living committee meeting. That was a very full meeting. We have another one this week on it. As well, the same date, I went and I met Counselor O'Toole and Counselor Clayton at A and W for MS fundraiser. And that area north of town in the city raised the most money in Canada for MS. So they actually had a fellow in the commercial, Alan, that was up for it and we got a picture with him and I, and I'm really glad because in this area, I know a few people and some good friends, good friends that have MS. And for some reason, the northern Alberta, there's, there's a lot more MS. As well, another, we had another meeting of enhancement at Musqueseepee Park. Council strategic ideas down the road is downtown, downtown revitalization and building stronger. And I think that went very well. And I'll speak to, there's one more here I'd like to speak to. And there was another meeting as well on August twenty-second. I'm just throwing them out there because that's what they had last week and these weren't half our meetings, they were half a day and some of them could have went all day because they extended to this week now. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. August thirteenth, I attended the Mission Neighborhood Association event, barbecue and with, with entertainment, thanks to Counselor Terrence for bringing readings on behalf of council. But really what I wanted to highlight there is that part of the agenda for that event was from the president of the association, an update on what's been happening with the board. And I thought that was very, very useful to spread the word and, and I guess support the good work of the association. Fourteenth, I did have a video interview with Greg and also I went to the Western Fastball Championship open ceremonies. Went another day or two as well, but the opening ceremonies were Mayor Given throughout the first pitch. Sixteenth, the Summer East Link Party, I'm really impressed with the, kind of the skateboard part of the festivities and also the community group information displays were there as well. Also, I went to the musical ride reception, so thanks to Counselor Rice and everyone for bringing that on. I just found that the, the members who were in the musical ride were very engaging and had a great conversation with, with them. Next day, I did go to the musical ride itself and then I want to highlight the, well, grand spirit on the twenty-second, but also there was a, there were three and a number of council made all three. We had a council tourism strategy framework discussion that Counselor Logan has mentioned. We also had the downtown enhancement project update and discussion. And finally, the South Montrose site visioning session. I think these kind of sessions for council are extremely important and allows us to, to work through some, some challenges. And so I found them very useful as well. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Adburn. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Busy couple of weeks. I'll mention, we had a number of sessions that I think that were great for council, a number of visioning sessions. I think it was excellent to kind of plan the, the city of the future and to really look at what we're doing in a, in a number of areas. On the thirteenth as well, I attended the Mission Neighborhood BBQ and it was great to see a great turnout and it was a great weather. It was awesome to see the neighborhood coming together that way. The musical ride was a great addition to the hundredth, hundredth celebration events and it was great to see those were well attended as well. Like Counselor Radburn, I was at the East Link Center for, they had a skate, skateboard and surfing day and very well attended and something that was really cool. I want to give kudos to a couple of our local skateboard shops who brought up a number of professional skateboarders from around Alberta and from California. And it was, it was really cool to see, you know, all the kids engaged and actually get to see, you know, a higher caliber of skateboarding in the community. So that was, that was awesome to see. I wanted to highlight just something I did personally this weekend. I had some people, friends from out east, they had just recently moved here and so my wife and I got to take them down to the Musqueseepee for the first time, went and played some disc golf and they were just blown away by how great Musqueseepee was. And they just raved about it the whole time, about how neat things were, how the grass was cotton, how the benches, they were just, just blown away what, you know, what a jewel it was. So it was really cool seeing, you know, an outside perspective, you know, something, you know, we know is great. But I also want to give kudos to Parks where, and, and Musqueseepee Park staff for, you know, having, keeping up such a great facility and, and great amenity to the city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Terrence. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't have as many things to report and most of them have already been reported. However, I did want to send a big thank you to everyone involved with the Centennial celebrations. It continues to be the talk of the town and it was a lot of work by everyone involved and it's truly appreciated by the community. So I think it's something that we really should be thankful for and sit back when you get a minute and enjoy what really happened because there was a lot of activities. So the only things I wanted to mention, I did also attend the tourism strategic planning session as well as the South Montrose site, as well as the MS society fundraiser at the A and W on the north side. And then the other thing, the lawn bowling champion, or lawn bowling tournament that took place on Friday night down at the lawn bowling site, which if you haven't been there is a great facility and it's often forgotten about. It's a great opportunity. I think it's something that families could do and, or children's birthday parties. There's lots of opportunity there. The city council team came for, came second and we were just half a point behind the downtown association team. So it was a great night had by myself and some fellow counselors. As well, yesterday, the opportunity to ten, attend at Evergreen Park, the horse races and the Centennial Stakes. So that was also something that was excellent. So thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Pretty much everything was mentioned, but I do want to mention the fact that I did attend the Western Fastball Senior Men's and Women's Fastball Tournament. I, I attended about four games throughout the weekend there and the musical ride was very well received by the city on the Saturday. I was there and the closeness that you were able to get to the horses and the riders, a lot of members or of the audience commented on that and got to see the facial expressions. And, and yesterday, I, I went to the Centennial Stakes and supported the region in a few bets. I didn't leave there with much, but I spent a little. And yeah, so over the last two weeks, I attended eighteen dates. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I was really pleased and, and proud to be the honorary coach of the lawn bowling team. And it was fabulous to see twelve teams down there using that facility. And as, as Counselor Clayton mentioned, a facility that, you know, has at times in its history been vastly underused and a, something that can be used by, you know, families. It was great. They'd done a great job down there. Of course, coming second was because they had a great coach. Attended the Centennial Stakes and it was the finale of the pari-mutuel racing for this year. So that was neat. Had my video interview with Greg. It was very sad to hear of the leaving of Carlina Enns, who had done those videos for us and has moved to be closer to her family in Vernon. So I think that said, attended the strategic planning sessions, a visioning session in the Montrose site session. Found that the breadth and the experience of the consultant is absolutely amazing, probably the best I've ever come across in terms of focusing the input. I want to thank Counselor Radburn. I, obviously, since we were on a break, he just figured we were missing each other. So he and his wife Donna hosted council to say, if you're missing each other, let's get together. And it was a, a great evening and guess what? We talked politics. So I'd like to thank them again for a wonderful evening.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I think all the events that I've attended were mentioned by council members already. And so with that, I think I'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Well.